Chair Williams, we are not going to have a live feed on YouTube, but we will be recording this via Zoom and post it to our site later. But you might want to announce it once you start the meeting. We are good to go ahead and start and let the commissioners all share their video.
Okay. Okay, so I can get started, it sounds like. Right?
Yes.
Through the chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Mary, were you saying that the meeting is not being broadcast at all right now?
It's broadcast via Zoom and it is being, anybody who's on Zoom can view this. They just, it's not going out to a YouTube channel.
I see. Okay.
We've had, we've had this happen once before.
Okay, okay, that, that should be fine then. I just want to make sure that it was actually, the meeting was actually being broadcast. Because there's, this remote meeting is subject to Brown Act requirements that require the meeting be broadcast. And if it can't be broadcast, then the meeting has to be paused. So if that's, that's the case, I think you can move forward.
So there are many panelists on, I mean, many attendees already on this call. So persona, is that, is that sufficient that people can log on to Zoom and see this?
If members of the public are able to log on to Zoom in order to view the broadcast, then I think that's fine.
Okay, then that, that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm not sure if I need to make a further announcement. Hopefully, that's clear to those that are listening. But this meeting is being recorded. It's available to part, to any of the public who wants to listen or participate by Zoom. It is just not being broadcast to YouTube as, as usual, as it usually is. Okay, so welcome to the Special Planning Commission meeting of May 3, 2022. At this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll do a roll call. Will the Planning Secretary please call roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Abner. Commissioner, Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. So at this time, we're still doing this. I'm going to give this reminder that due to the physical distancing protocol calls in place at this time, we're continuing to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of the published agenda. And there are two ways to participate. Join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at, at the appropriate time. Phone-in participation can be done by calling area code 408-638-0968 with the conference ID number. The meeting ID number is 8977-8598-7223 and passcode 168214. When the item of interest is open for consideration, press star nine to raise your hand to be called on. And when called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and provide your comments. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for the specific item. Let's see, public comment will be considered for the draft housing element, which is the only item on the agenda tonight for this special meeting. And so we'll ask for your comments at the appropriate time. And we're not, we, this is continuation of last week's meeting. And last week, we did, we provided an opportunity for general public comments on stuff that's not on the agenda. We, I don't think we had any speakers or comments at that time. So because this is a continuation of last week's meeting, we don't need to do that at this time. So the first item is, or the only item is, item number one, the draft 2023 to 2031 housing element, continued from Planning Commission meeting of April 26, 2022. Would staff like to introduce themselves?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Williams, Honorable Members of the Commission. I'm Manira Sampea, the Planning Manager. And I'll be doing a brief presentation to pick this up from our last meeting on the draft housing element. With me tonight are Deputy Director Zachary Dahl, as well as our Housing Consultant Diana Elrod, who will be available to answer questions at the conclusion of the presentation. We also have our Housing, Housing Manager Eloisa Maria Garcia and Nikki Vu, the Housing Specialist, if there are specific comments or questions relating to housing programs.
Okay.
With that, yes. With that, just briefly, tonight's agenda, we will have a brief staff, staff presentation followed by public comment for any new comments that were not covered in the last meeting. Subsequent to that, we expect Planning Commission discussion and questions on the continued item. And then in terms of the next steps on the draft housing element, we are expecting a city council meeting coming up either on May 16 or the 23rd. And once we have all of the comments from the public, the commission, as well as the council, our staff would be updating the draft housing element in May and June and with a goal of submitting it to HCD in June. Our meeting objectives for tonight are to receive any new public comments to give folks an opportunity to provide oral testimony on the draft housing element on, on topics that were not covered in the last meeting. We are also looking forward to receiving Planning Commission guidance on the remaining sections of the draft housing element. And then just to reiterate, a motion and formal recommendation on the draft is not required at this meeting. However, the city council will consider all of the comments as well as provide their input on May 16 or 23rd. This particular housing element will come back to the Planning Commission in final form for adoption in, in the fall. So there will be additional review and opportunity to comment at that time. Just a quick background, I know we covered this last meeting, but for members of the public who may not have been present, the housing element is a required element of the general plan and it requires certification by the State Housing and Community Development Department. Typically, the, the housing planning cycles has, have an eight-year period, which is distinct from the general plan, which, which runs on a longer timeframe. And what we are here presenting before you tonight or discussing tonight is the sixth housing element cycle, which runs from 2023 to 2031. The draft housing element for the City of San Mateo is currently in the 30-day public review period. So it was released on April 6th and the period closes on May 6th. Of course, you know, we welcome engagement and community input through the life of this process. So, so while the official public review period would end on May 6th, we welcome any comments even beyond that. The draft housing element is intended to address the regional housing needs allocation for the City of San Mateo, which is 7,015 units out of the total Bay Area allocation of 400, 400,041, no, sorry, 441,000 odd units. So the discussion topics on the draft housing element were broken down into four components. On April 26, the Planning Commission discussed and provided extensive input to staff on the sites inventory, as well as the affirmatively furthering fair housing narrative. Tonight's special meeting, which was a continuance from that night, are focused on the other housing element sections, as well as the goals, policies and programs that form the implementation plan for this draft. To elaborate further on some of the other required sections that are in the, in the housing element, we have additional analysis and narratives around the governmental and non-governmental constraints that prevent housing development in the city. There is information in the draft housing element on existing and potential housing resources, as well as climate change and energy conservation requirements. And of course, the draft housing element does cover accomplishments and reviews the prior housing element as well. And then finally, the staff is proposing that the draft housing element include five goals, which have a number of policies and programs within each goal. These build upon the three P, P's concept that was introduced to the Planning Commission and City Council in the February study session that focused on production of new housing, preservation of existing housing, and then protection of current residents to prevent displacement. And subsequent to that, and based on the input that was provided, staff is proposing an additional goal four that focuses on promotion of social resilience through outreach and education, as well as goal five, which would be an action plan for affirmatively furthering fair housing in the city. In terms of next steps, just a further breakdown. So May 6th is the end of the public review period. And as I mentioned before, this is targeted for city council, either on May 16th at the regular meeting or on the 23rd through a special meeting. In, once the, once all the comments have been received, staff would be updating the draft housing element after that meeting. But we, we've actually started it already, but we will be completing those updates and then providing it to HCD for their first 90-day review cycle in, in June. Once HCD provides us with comments, we would be updating that draft, perhaps doing additional outreach with the community to ensure that they are aware of the changes that have been made since the draft was released. And then also scheduling before the Planning Commission and City Council for, for adoption, before it can be submitted to HCD for certification. So this concludes staff's brief presentation and we are here for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks for the recap of the presentation as well. So at this time, I should just look at my notes because we, we will take questions from planning commissioners now if there's some clarifying questions before we get into comments and discussion. I did just want to note that, as you said, there's probably a brief opportunity for the public to, well, I don't know about brief, but there's an opportunity for the public to speak as well and ask questions or provide comments, I guess. If they, on this section of the housing element, I guess, is our goal, since we provided that opportunity for the original portion at last week's meeting. So at this time, are there any questions that any planning commissioners want to bring forward to help clarify things? No, okay. Then I think we can go ahead and open it up for public comment. Do we, Mary, do we have any members of the public that would like to speak?
Chair Williams, I'm just going to give a second for hands to be raised.
Okay. Actually, I realized I had a couple of questions. I skipped myself. Should I ask my questions before we go to public? Okay. I had a couple of questions and it may be somewhere in the documents, but I didn't find it. There was a reference to Project Sentinel and I'm not familiar with that. Can you guys tell me what that, what, this, something more specific about Project Sentinel?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Good evening. Project Sentinel is a, primarily on, in, on the peninsula is a fair housing testing and mediation group. And they basically work in conjunction with jurisdictions. Many jurisdictions fund them, provide funding to them through, primarily through the CDBG program to give, to have them work with people who believe they've been discriminated against or have fair housing complaints. And they do this work on behalf of, I think, pretty much every jurisdiction in the county. Eloisa obviously is here and I know she knows more specifically what they do for the City of San Mateo.
Yes, that is correct, Diana. Project Sentinel does receive CDBG funds for fair housing complaint investigation within the city. And as Diana noted, I believe most, most, if not all the other jurisdictions within the county also fund Project Sentinel for that same purpose.
Okay, great, thank you. I felt like it was something I should know, but I didn't know. The other question I had was, there's a goal of kind of training for up to 200 landlords. I think it was like each spring. And I was wondering if we know what percentage of landlords that is in the city? Like, is there, is there any information on how many that, how many landlords there are in the city?
I don't think we know right off the top of our head, but the presumption is that, given the number of renters that there are in the community, that, you know, that is a safe assumption. I mean, it may be that we hit the vast majority of landlords for this training within the first couple of rounds. I don't know, but definitely the number of people who are renters in the community would include both large landlords, as well as smaller, you know, mom and pop kind of landlords. It's primarily those that we have the concerns about or that, that Root Policy who did the AFFH analysis and some of the, the countywide comments that we got, which was included as an, an attachment to the, to the appendix, about the comments about people having difficulty either finding housing because they felt they were discriminated against. And it appears that a fair number of landlords don't really understand what fair housing is.
Okay, well, it sounded like a fairly large number, a good goal, but I wasn't sure how that, you know, what, how many 200, what percentage that is in terms of the number of landlords that are in the city.
I don't think we really know that number. I think that that's a, you know, aspirational goal that we'll be working to sort of further refine once we get more information.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so those were my immediate questions. And if no one else has any questions right now, then we could go back to public comment. So, Mary, is there anyone that has raised their hand?
Yes, there are a few public commenters. We have two at this time. You want me to go ahead and do a three?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you.
So the first public commenter is Kalisha Webster. Kalisha, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kalisha Webster and I'm Senior Housing Advocate at Housing Choices, a nonprofit service provider serving Golden Gate regional center consumers with developmental disabilities throughout San Mateo County with finding and retaining affordable housing. We want to thank city staff and the consultants for the work you have done to create policies and programs which affirmatively further fair housing. We support the many programs and policies you have listed in the draft housing element, especially policies 5.1.3, 5.2.3 and 5.4.4, and hope to continue to support the city in your efforts to increase housing accessibility for people of all abilities. One important note that we would like to make is that for policy 5.4.4, in addition to signage and outreach to landlords on reasonable accommodations, property managers should be required to provide tenants with information on resources and organizations that can help them with submitting their requests for reasonable accommodations. We also hope to see the city clarify their definition of accessible units in regards to policies such as policy 5.1.2 and policy 5.2.2. To create housing that is truly accessible to people of all abilities, the city must commit to creating housing that meets the needs of a range of different types of disability beyond just physical disabilities. For instance, for a person with a developmental disability or mental health disorder, the key to accessibility is coordinated onsite services. We also ask that when planning an affirmative marketing plan under policy 5.1.2 and policy 4.4, rather than setting a quantitative goal of how many units should be affirmatively marketed, developers should be required to affirmatively market the types of units that will best fit the specific needs of the different special needs populations, such as marketing units accessible to people with disabilities, to organize, to organizations serving people with disabilities. You can also go further by requiring that people with disabilities are given priority in applying for available affordable units with accessibility features that are relevant to their mobility, hearing or sight needs, as is done in San Francisco, and implementing a universal design policy. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Yes, the next speaker is a phone caller with the last four digits of 462. You can press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Cheryl speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I didn't catch your name.
Carol Eldridge. And I am speaking this evening on behalf of a, a community group called One San Mateo that works to promote racial and economic equity in San Mateo, primarily through our advocacy for affordable housing and rental protection. As we reviewed the housing element, our core interest was its success in fulfilling the mandates of affirmatively furthering fair housing. I would like to focus attention on a couple of constraints and their implications for AFFH. First, measure Y. The draft housing element includes mention of this, but its perfunctory treatment of measure Y vastly underplays its importance as an obstacle to creating new homes, including affordable homes. Three years ago, the council considered expanding the below-market rate requirement to 20%. But the economic consultants hired by the city ultimately concluded that this increase was not feasible, given the height and density limits of measure Y. This is just one illustration of how measure Y interferes with the creation of new homes, including affordable homes. And a more robust treatment of this constraint is clearly called for in the housing element. Second, R1 zoning. The housing element also fails to evaluate what has given rise to the segregation in San Mateo. This is a requirement of AFFH. Specifically, it fails to examine why some neighborhoods in San Mateo are predominantly white and others are characterized by poverty, cost burden and overcrowding. Obviously, this is closely tied to the design and intent of R1 zoning in the first place and the fact that at the time of formation, many R1 neighborhoods in San Mateo contained racial covenants explicitly prohibiting all but whites from living there. There are other contributing factors as well, so it's not exclusively a zoning issue, but certainly the character and history of R1 is preeminent. This void in the analysis, this failure to fully explore the causes of segregation in San Mateo needs to be filled. Finally, I will share that One San Mateo's strongest objection to the housing element is the fact that none of the sites are located in the highest opportunity areas. Specifically, we object to the hands-off approach that's being taken to R1s. This is a clear violation of AFFH. The effort to protect these neighborhoods, to exempt them from any meaningful densification, not only fails to reverse historical patterns of segregation, segregation, it locks them into place. R1 neighborhoods need to be opened up, enabling the transformation of exclusive neighborhoods into inclusive ones. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, can we have the next speaker?
Chair Williams, I think that was the last speaker. There's no one else with their hands raised.
Okay. Great, thank you. So at this time, I wanted to remind ourselves that we're not making a motion or taking a vote tonight. The purposes for the Planning Commission to provide feedback to staff, as well as providing this forum for the public to provide feedback to staff on this remaining portion of the housing element that we're looking at. Wanted to just check and see if there is any way, I'm not sure that there's a good way to break it up, to tell you the truth. Sometimes, I guess, these large things we've been talking about over these last few meetings, I feel like it's worth, you know, worth putting it out there to see if it would help us to kind of get, you know, get our hands around it. Is there any purpose in kind of breaking it up into parts? Or do we kind of just want to each go ahead with our comments? I guess.
Through the chair, I, I organized my comments and my notes by the appendices. So I have, you know, I have comments on the needs analysis, the constraints analysis, measurable policies and programs. So if we want it, if we want to go by the appendices, that could be one way to organize it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's necessary. I mean, I thought that earlier, but then sort of as I got into it, I kind of decided maybe it's not necessary. But if, it, does anyone else feel like it would be a good idea, Commissioner Abner or Commissioner Nugent, to break it out into parts?
I'm, I'm open. I'm pretty flexible as far as what other folks want.
As am I. You know, if, if we feel that breaking it out in, in individual parts, it might make it a little bit easier to convey our concerns. Yeah, I would be fine with that.
Okay, well, like I said, I kind of have vacillated back and forth as I went through it. So there's kind of overlap and, you know, cross-references a little bit. So I'm kind of changing my mind and thinking that maybe we should just provide comments as we, you know, as we see fit or as we've organized our notes. So with that, I'm, I think we'll just keep it as, as a whole package. As it is, we've broken it down into two meetings and we covered, you know, obviously a really big portion last week. And now we're, you know, a kind of a, you know, more manageable piece of things this week. So, so I say we just go for it.
So through the chair?
Yes.
For your, your question on the amount of landlords in the City of San Mateo, per the City of San Mateo Housing Task Force summary, which I think was done in 2018, there, there were 5,966 landlords in the city.
Thank you. That's helpful. Great, okay. So with that, who would like to go ahead and get started? I just gave my little spiel about, we're not making a motion. We're just talking about providing commentary. I'm just making sure I don't have any other notes to give you guys. But, oh, I guess I would say that I did want to make a comment that if there are, if we get into, if we're, if we're each inclined to get into a really high level of detail in terms of, you know, specific language or, you know, wordsmithing each, you know, or a lot of wordsmithing of the various components of this, I do want to remind people that we are, you know, it's perfectly fine to put that level of detail in writing and submit that to the planning department. It's still part of the public record. So if that helps it be manageable, feel, you know, keep that in mind. Okay, so now with that, would anyone like to take a first, jump in first?
Just to double check, we're doing the, we're going to group it with other housing element sections and then we're going to speak, each commissioner will speak on that. And then we're going to go to, to goals, policies and actions. And each, so we're going to break it up like that?
Sure, yes. I was not thinking about that, but that's, that's a good idea. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, so let's start with the other items. Could they bring that slide back up that you, you had a slide that went fairly quickly and it had, you know, the governmental and non-governmental constraints? It had a list of items, yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so with that, those are the, that's a synopsis of the other sections of the housing element.
Well, through the, through the chair, if nobody else wants to jump in, just for the sake of time, I will, I will go, volunteer to go first. My other required sections thoughts focus primarily. My other required sections thoughts focus primarily on constraints analysis. So that's what I'll be focusing on in comment. So I found that the constraints analysis could have been more useful. The way it was, it wasn't particularly helpful in terms of guiding policy at this stage, which is unfortunate because this really should be where we look to, you know, figure out what policies will be the best for our city and where we should focus staff time on, you know, general public's time. One thing specifically that I wanted to mention was the constraints analysis should provide metrics on how existing land use and related policies affect the city's ability to build housing. You know, there's millions of counterfactuals to what we're currently doing, but the big one is, you know, I want to know how much more housing perhaps could be built under different zoning scenarios. We've done that for the general plan update and it does show us that there are differences. And then what are the true limiting factors over the long term, just generally from a policy standpoint? You know, why, why are construction costs so high? And what can the city do to counteract these trends? So just answering those questions, I would really like to see the constraints analysis do a little bit more focused job on answering that, those big questions. Dialing in a little bit, I think the height and density constraints on BMR units through Measure Y, but also just, you know, our current zoning code should be highlighted. And I think that was mentioned either in a public comment or somebody said the height and density constraints contained in Measure Y are limiting the city's ability to increase the percentage of below-market rate affordable units for the city's inclusionary ordinance. So we've looked at going up to 20%, which I know other cities are in the, on the peninsula are, are able to do. And the city commission study found that that is not feasible. It would allow cities to pencil out or it wouldn't allow cities, their projects to be developed. That can add up significantly, the difference in BMR units when we're talking about thousands of units. And it means we, the constraints that it imposes translate into needing more redevelopable land to achieve any given quantity of subsidized units. And it also increases costs because the cost of land needs to be factored in and the entitlement processes for multiple projects to give the, to get the equivalent number of subsidized units increases. So I think that that's an important thing to understand how our current codes affect our ability to produce below-market rate units without subsidy from the city. And then the other thing to note is just generally what our, our current zoning code does for density limits. I think density limits are the biggest constraining factor for our current policies in the city of San Mateo. You know, we could potentially have two, maybe even three times the number of units under a five-story to seven-story height limit. And what that does is by decreasing the number of units that are possible, it doubles or triples the land costs per unit, similar to the BMR for all ranges of affordability. So I think having that understood is important to at least have written down in our, in our, in our housing element, especially since we can easily picture the counterfactual. It also, you know, when you need to have more land per unit, it, you know, procedural costs increase too. The other thing that I would have liked to have seen more on is community opposition. Community opposition is a clear problem. It's not unique to San Mateo. Some cities are worse, some cities are better. I think generally, most people want more housing to solve our housing problems or housing crisis, our affordable, lack of affordable housing. But it only takes a few vocal influential residents to block housing. So in this scenario or this arena, again, counterfactuals are hard to quantify, but the effects are potentially enormous because we don't know when projects are not proposed that would otherwise be proposed if it was easier or more amenable to get projects done. And I think a big part of that is uncertainty. And, and we should at least have something about the effects of uncertainty in development that lead to many projects probably never being started. So understanding that would be really important. So it's at least recorded in our housing element. And then finally, constraints, I think our, I've seen our fees are, are not very well compared to the rest of San Mateo County. We have relatively high fees compared to the other cities near us. And that's especially the case for small multifamily projects. They, the fees for small multifamily projects are three and a half times higher per unit than for single-family homes. And I don't understand why that is. That seems to be discouraging the more affordable types of homes being, that can be built. And that seems problematic, to say the least. So that's, that's my comments on constraints analysis. I don't have anything specific about other sections right now, but I'd love to hear what other commissioners have to say.
Because I was muted. Okay, would Commissioner Edman or Commissioner Patel like to go next?
Sure, I can go. Through the chair, would that be okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you.
All right, I'm managing to mute buttons too.
No worries. Give the disclaimer that I'm fighting a cold and have been coughing a lot today, so I've got some water. I'll try to make it through, but please be patient. Commissioner Nugent hit almost all of my notes on the constraints analysis. There was a comment, I'm not quite sure I understand the details of, from a letter submitted by the Housing Leadership Council that noted the city has a unique interpretation of state density bonus law and, and that it constraints housing development. I don't know the details of that. If anybody on staff knows what they're referring to, I'd be interested to hear more about that. But that, that may be something to call out as well.
Through the chair, we can certainly look into the letter and I include that in the constraints analysis if we want to.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm just remembering one more question I had related to the site inventory. And that is just that I noted, there was a public comment that came in today asking about a specific site being added to the inventory. I think it was at 25th and Hacienda. There was a public comment about strong interest in a congregation of a church, the First Presbyterian Church, to build 70 low-income senior apartments on their parking lot as well as a parcel at 190 West 25th, West 25th Street. And so I just wanted to highlight that here for the record and ask if, if there'd be any reason that it would not make sense to include those two sites on the site inventory.
Through the chair, we would again have to evaluate, you know, those kind of comments. We have been receiving comments expressing interest to be added to the sites inventory and then on the flip side, asking to be removed from the site inventory. So we certainly include that in the record and, and we will be justifying, providing some substantial evidence in the next iteration for each.
That's it. Thank you so much. Okay, notes on needs analysis. So I have, I have the appendix open. I think it's appendix A. And my first note is that a couple of questions just on data and data sources. So one, it notes the number of homes built as a percentage, but the number of jobs created is both a percentage and an absolute number. This is on page HA6. And I was just wondering if we could be consistent and include both percentages and absolute numbers for both, just so it's easy for people to compare as they read through. And then my question is about the sources of the data. So I'm looking at this page and it says that the number of jobs increased during 20, since 2010, number of jobs increased by 16,810. However, per the census data, the Census American Community Survey data indicated that 21,607 jobs were created from 2010 to 2019. I recognize different data sources, track different things, and there's obviously going to be a little bit of variation, but this is a 30% variation, which seems like quite a lot. So I'm wondering if we can A, add the source of our data and B, add some clarity around what exactly it is counting that might help explain why the number is so different from the number. And then similarly, on page HA32, it states that 1,887 housing units were created between 2010 and 2020. However, a few weeks ago, I had asked City Manager Corbett if he could share the latest data we had on housing units that were completed. And he shared a total of 2,831 housing units completed, which is 50% more than the number we're reporting in the, in the housing element needs analysis, which again seems like a pretty big cap. And so if we could add some more clarity on what those numbers are including and why our own city's records show 50% more housing units completed, I think that might, that might be good to help explain what the differences in those numbers are coming from.
Through the, through the chair, may I just make one quick note about that? You're right. The problem is, is that a lot of the data that's provided here is provided through A-BAG's work. They provided data on housing statistics based on a variety of different kinds of data. And the city's own records are going to be somewhat at odds because the, 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 a lot of what they're using at A-BAG are estimates rather than actual numbers. I'm not saying that's true in every case, but we'll try to make a, kind of try to explain that where we can and if we can change it, we will. It, it, yeah, but the problem is, is we're, you know, many cooks are stirring the pot.
Sure, great. I just want to make sure we get credit for all the great homes that we are building. So if we can, if we can note that in a footnote or something, that would be great.
Through the chair, if I may just provide one more clarification to help with that understanding as well.
Yes.
I think there, there's two different analyses when you're looking at housing production. There's the city's quantified objectives, which focus are more project-specific. And then there's our overall housing numbers. And so that's, the quantified objectives do not encompass everything, but they just focus on the projects that we identified in the past cycle and then in the current cycle. But we can definitely try to make that point clearer and differentiate between what those two sets of numbers mean.
Great.
Do you have any further comments on that?
Two more. On page HA38, there is a table that I think either is mislabeled or is potentially double-counting some homes. I think it might just be a mislabel, but I would just flag that as something to look at. And then the Housing Leadership Council also included in their letter a note about more explicitly acknowledging the job creation and housing creation imbalance. And I agree with that comment, just diving into a little bit more detail there. The analysis notes that housing production has not kept up with demand, but doesn't go into any data or detail about the extent to which that is the case. And I think that might be helpful. And then I have one more general comment from the housing element draft, which is from page HA12, which states that despite the Measure Y growth limitation, San Mateo has seen a significant amount of growth over the past two decades. But then again, there's a, a graph in the needs analysis on page HA33, figure 22, which shows a significant drop off in housing production over the past two decades, totaling fewer than 3,600 units over the past two decades. And so those two statements seem kind of in contradiction to each other. Those are all my notes from the other sections. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Commissioner Edman, do you have any comments on this, on these other sections?
I do. Thank you, Margaret.
Okay. Go right ahead. Sorry, trying to click around my screen here.
I think there was quite a bit of discussion in different, different locations of public comments and, and through this, the report itself of the costs that are impacting the overall feasibility of, of producing new housing. And I think one of the costs that is exorbitant and we may be able to alleviate some of it, and this is an ongoing discussion, is the amount of parking. I've noticed numerous times where the city or that the parking has been proposed at considerably higher rates than the state requires. And I've heard numerous reasons why. Yet I think it's something that we should really be focusing on. I'd much rather make bedrooms than parking stalls. And I think the city can do a lot to move that discussion along and get us to a point where we're spending a lot less money on parking and more on affordable housing. I know in one of the state laws or it's, or it's the, just the general plan overview that what you're supposed to do as a jurisdiction, if you have a constraint, a constraint specifically such as height and density in your jurisdictions, that you are required to look at your, the neighboring cities and see how their housing production compared in regards to not having the same constraints. And I never saw an analysis of that. I think it would be very helpful to understand what our neighbors are able to do working without height and density restraints, which would give us a little bit more of an idea of what is possible, similarly to what Adam was saying. We don't know what we're missing. And it would be, I mean, you're supposed, you're supposed to do that search. And it's not supposed to be just a county-wide search, but it's supposed to be local jurisdictions working without those restraints. You know, I've had the opportunity many years ago to work in San Jose as a general contractor. And what they had in place there were express ways to acquire permits, which were called through express. And I'm not talking about just small tenant improvements. I'm talking about major projects where you could go in and have every party associated with the project from staff and from the developer and within hours walk away with a permit. And I saw it, I saw that process numerous, worked numerous times seamlessly. And I've always thought that would be such a great way to promote building here in San Mateo. And I know that past, past, in the past, staffs had past in the past, staffs had thought about doing express permits. And I think it's really something worth looking into. You can cut your 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 review time down substantially. And I think save costs for the city and also for the developers. I don't know of other jurisdictions that had ever done it. San Jose did it very well. And it was a process that I saw that was extremely helpful, not only to the developer, but also to the city. You know, as part as part of talking about educating the public and getting more information, you know, out there about what's available. Know what I found interesting about the True North survey is I think sixty-four percent of the people surveyed said that they wanted taller and denser buildings in in areas of 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 mobility of transit hubs. Yet I think there was one question that wasn't asked in that survey, and that would have been, how do you propose that we pay for that? And that question needs to be asked to the public also. How are we going to garner the fees? And who who is willing to help carry part of that financial component? However, that may be, if it's if it's, you know, some type of bond measure or or, you know, sales tax. But there's got to be, there's got to be money generated to get projects funded, and it can't be all on the back of developers. That obviously hasn't worked, and it's not going to work going forward. I think that you know, to go back to to measure why the state obviously recognizes, as does the city, recognize the handicap that we are working under, not just to try and meet the RENA numbers, but much more importantly, to get people safe and secure housing within our city. And you know, the the general plan vision is a nice document. The part of it is directing the city to make bold, take bold actions to alleviate or to put us in a position where we're much more equitable. I think we need to really look outside the box and be bold in our, not only in our vision, but more importantly, in the policies that we set. The climate chain context with the energy conservation requirements, I don't think we're addressing climate change well at all, but nobody is. So I think that we should, we should spend as much time as we do on the climate change as we are in putting our housing element together because they go hand in hand. Yeah, in in closing with the prior housing element review and accomplishments, I don't think we we've been able to do anywhere near what we had hoped we had been able to do. Our affordable housing numbers are exceedingly low compared to what we would like to make. And as Adam had said during the last meeting, he's not willing to accept defeat. We we need to, we need to really think outside the box and incorporate as many constructive tools that will make a difference for us to get to the point where we need to affirmatively further fair housing. Last note on the existing and potential housing resources. There's only one thing that I wasn't sure about and where where this number came from. But I think it said that projected housing projects through through the city, city-owned property. And I'm not sure of the total numbers that were quoted. Yet I didn't think the city had many opportunities at all as I'm not so sure, I mean, it said sites to be sites to be named or TBD. But do we really have public property out there that is potentially available for housing? And that was it, Margaret. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to start my comments by actually reply or responding to some comments from my fellow planning commissioners. So specifically related to the fees for, you know, planning, review, building department, plan check, the whole permit process. And, you know, this is what I do day in, day out, it seems like, maybe not day in, day out. But as an architect, I work in a lot of different jurisdictions. I've currently been working in the city of San Jose, unfortunately. It's they do not have any kind of an express system at all anymore, if they ever did. We can tell you that. And part of the issue is that, you know, we have in California, we have a very robust, the California Building Code is the most robust building code, I think, in the in the nation. And, you know, we have, it incorporates Title twenty-four accessibility issues. It incorporates a green building code. I mean, we're the we're the leaders in some of these things in the state. So, you know, the the planning departments and the building departments, they have no small task to to give, you know, to issue permits. It is, it is, there, there are a lot of elements. So when I reviewed that part of the housing elements and then, you know, I I really skipped over that part because reducing fees, yes, that would be great, but I I find that not realistic. And I actually don't think that city of San Mateo is in as high as many other jurisdictions. But I have limited experience in the city of San Mateo as an architect. But but, you know, all of the other jurisdictions, it costs, it costs a lot of time and money. There are many, the the issue with multifamily projects versus like a single-family home or small TI or something is that there are, you know, there are fire exiting issues, there are occupancy issues, there are, you know, public works, there's there are review of many, you know, multiple departments that a single-family home or a tenant improvement or, you know, smaller project wouldn't have. So I think a multifamily have multifamily housing project has a complexity of issues that the engineers, the architects, the plan checkers all have responsibility to to deal with. So as far as, you know, how do we fund the actual projects? I, well, I guess that's one of my later comments, but, you know, I mean, the the developers aren't, you know, I love that we have some amazing developers that are doing some wonderful projects, but they're not nonprofits, you know, they're they're they are businesses. And I was heartened actually to read about the funding sources and, you know, the variety of, you know, sources for funding, besides public, nonprofit, private, for-profit. So I learned a lot about the various kinds of funding, the programs that are out there for for that. So I thought that was interesting. I will say one other comment about one from my pre my from the other planning, which was, I think, was it John that just was talking about, you know, learning from our neighboring cities and how they're handling, like what the revisions to the height limits mean for them. And I think that's a great idea, you know, I think that would I think that would help, you know, inform all of us or inform, you know, the general public, you know, here's what's happening in other cities, here's how they're doing it. So I'm not quite sure how we how we do that, but that would, I think that would be valuable because, yeah, we're not, you know, we're not asking, we're why reinvent the wheel? I mean, we want to learn from what's happening in other cities as well around the Bay Area. So anyway, so that's, so thank you for all of that. My other comments just on these items were, you know, I looked closely at the climate change thing, the climate change portion. I think I might have talked about this a little bit last week, that, you know, preserving existing buildings and homes is actually the most green and sustainable way to to manage our resources in this world. And so I am, you know, as I said last week, I think that the pieces of the housing element that talk about that, that talk about keeping people in their homes, if, you know, when when it's applicable, you know, that, you know, helps people in many ways as well as, I think, you know, managing our resources and climate change. I mean, there's, there's just an inordinate amount of construction waste on every project. So anytime we can, you know, manage to keep people in their homes and, you know, work with existing conditions, it's not a bad thing. It's it's a good thing, it's in my mind. So that those existing buildings are important. I think I kind of covered everything. Those are, those are generally my comments. So, yeah, I felt like, well, let me just see if I got everything. Yeah, I I feel like the, again, I kind of focused a little bit more on the climate change other section, just to see if it kind of had everything in it that I think it should. And again, because our California Building Code has such a robust green building court, green building code element to it. You know, there was a, there was some appropriate reference to that. Okay, so those are my comments on that. And then I think if we another way, want to go on to goals, policies and programs.
Through the chair, can I, can I just start a small discussion?
Yes.
Before we before we move on?
I started.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I I wanted to touch on the fees. So part of this reason why I spoke about it in this section specifically, the constraints analysis, is I want to actually see why those fees are higher. I'm I'm familiar with the differences between, say, the residential code and the California Building Code and requirements of that. I just want to know, is it, are the requirements going to be three and a half times more? Is there, is there reasons like that we can see as the public? What's going into those discrepancies in fees? And especially for smaller projects where those kinds of differences could really mean the difference between that project happening or not. Whereas it could, through economies of scale, get get better absorbed in the larger projects. So the the fee analysis that I would like to see would actually hopefully answer that question. You know, is it, is it warranted? Is there somewhat place that we can adjust how we're doing business as a city?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you bring up a good point that, you know, we could, there could be perhaps more transparency. But I mean, I I guess my point was just that I think that the larger the project, the more, you know, the more the more is affected, you know, from the whether from the sanitary sewer to, you know, I mean, every, every aspect of the building is of a building is more, you know, going to be needed to be reviewed by more departments. And so, but yeah, it's a huge, it's a huge jump. You're right, from from a smaller project to us to one of these larger projects.
Through the chairs, my apologies if I may interject with a brief clarification in response to the the topic of fees.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Did want to just clarify, we did realize after the the draft was published that there were a couple errors in the way the numbers were calculated and in the way the inputs were provided to twenty-one elements. So we are in the process of reevaluating and making sure the fees in our most current fee schedule are reflected because we do believe that they are actually lower than is currently reflected. So we're we're pulling all the data and and hope to have updated numbers within the next week or so. So and hopefully those numbers reflect lower per unit and per square foot fees than is currently shown.
Thank you. Yeah.
Lower is better. Okay. I think that covers it for this portion of the discussion. So we could move on to the goals and policies.
Through the chair, may I ask one more question?
Yes. Oops.
I accidentally muted myself. I have one more question about the last appendix, which is the review of the prior element and the objectives versus the accomplishments. And on table two, which is our accomplishments, I see that Kiku Crossing is listed on the accomplishments. And I was curious, I know the rules about reporting projects, especially near the boundaries between cycles is very complex. I've tried to look at them and interpret them and understand them several times, and I'm always confused. But I was curious if staff could explain when Kiku Crossing is expected to open? And and if it's after twenty twenty-three, then why why it's listed on the table of accomplishments through twenty twenty-three?
And start with a response, and then anyone else on the team, feel free to jump in. My one thing to note is Kiku Crossings has been a project that has been worked for many years. I would say a good chunk of this prior housing cycle. And so we wanted to note all of the work that has gone into getting this project to the point where it broke ground this this past February. And so I believe that a the units count when they are, they receive occupancy. So they will technically come come online as part of this upcoming housing cycle. But we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge all of the work that went into this project during this current wrapping up housing cycle to get this project to the point where it's breaking ground. So I think that's really what we're acknowledging is there was, obviously, the units come online is is the ultimate objective. But all of the work that got the project there, it it took many, many years to get there. So I think that's really what we want to try to try to highlight there.
And so just to clarify, it's not being include, it's being included under this portion where you're listing accomplishments or achievements.
Yes, yes. And just to clarify, a project, there is a small window where a project can be counted against the RENA allocation going forward, which in this case, if it receives its certificate of occupancy after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, it could also be an accomplishment because it was in production during the last housing element. It's not actually double counting, but it qualifies to be essentially run against or lower your RENA allocation if it's not complete until after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So it's a true pipeline project.
Does that mean we would, we would count the units twice in cycle five and cycle six?
Yes. Essentially, because the production, the production is less important to HCD. I mean, it's important to them, but what they're trying to do, what they really focus on is what is your next RENA allocation? And what units can you assign to the next allocation that are already in the pipeline? Though they, there is this small wiggle room, but the 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 purposes that that those units fulfill are different for each for either whether you're looking back or looking forward.
Okay.
If you're in, if you're in construction or you're, you've got your, you've pulled permits, you can count it as a project that at least started during the last cycle.
Okay, so it started. And so then it will be completed in the next cycle, so it'll be counted as housing at that point. But it's, I mean, you're
That's correct. And it also, we can apply it to the RENA allocation if does not receive certificate of occupancy until after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Which is obviously the case, yeah.
Through the chair, if I could perhaps further clarify, so HCD requires reporting of all of the housing projects that are in the pipeline to Diana's earlier point. So we report on applications that are deemed complete, applications that are approved, planning applications, and then also building permits that are issued, and then projects that receive certificates of occupancy. So HCD has, you know, is is on an annual basis, provided a long list of all of these types of projects at different stages of construction. But to Diana's point, they're counted only when sort of good occupancy is issued, and Kiku Crossing would be counted towards that next cycle.
Okay, so listing it on our accomplishments table for the the analysis of the previous element is not also counting it against the units delivered for analysis of the previous element is not also counting it against the units delivered for cycle five? Like accomplishments for cycle five is different than units delivered for cycle five? Is that, is that what you're saying?
That, that would be my understanding because that's covering all of the projects that are in the pipeline. The, the annual report goes to HCD, uh, that's based on the, the certificates of occupancy that are issued.
And it, it's also reflecting that the housing element is more than just the raw numbers of production. There's, there's programs, there's support, there's keeping people housed. There's, there's a lot of other things that go into it. And so I think that's partly what it's reflecting.
Yeah, I guess I liked what you, you know, like you said, I mean, it's also, there's some, there's value in acknowledging the work, especially a project like that. That's an exciting project like this. Well, I mean, any project, but there's, there's value in, um, you know, acknowledging the point that we're at now, which is permitted and, you know, breaking ground. I would think. So, okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. Is there any other questions, I guess, from planning commissioners as we?
Through the chair?
Mm-hmm. Yes, go ahead.
I did have, um, one comment and, um, Commissioner Patel, um, kind of made me think about the, the, the accomplishment. And I'm hoping that, you know, there's some way for us to garner some education about the ADU, the ADU situation. In December of 2017, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to allow ADUs up to 1,200 square feet as long as the primary home was 2,400 square feet. We were brought that, um, issue late in the year because in 2018, the laws were changing. It was brought to the city council. The city council rejected our recommendation and they decided unanimously to keep in place the maximum size unit you could build of an ADU with 640 feet. Throughout the years, um, there were numerous changes made to the ADU requirements, uh, per the state. Um, in local, many local jurisdictions aggressively, uh, put forward ADU guidelines which encouraged ADU constructions. We did not. Um, and I, I think for us to now say that that was an accomplishment, accomplishment in Rena cycle five is not a sincere quote. A lot of other jurisdictions made the changes numerous times because of state law kept changing and the city of San Mateo through whatever reason chose not to. And it was a frustration for a lot of people in the city not being able to get current, accurate information on what they could or could not do. And it was, it was somewhat frustrating to watch. We apparently have now embraced the new state laws and have programs in place. But that was not something that I would have highlighted as an accomplishment in our last Rena cycle. Thank you. Margaret, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that kind of covers, that was also maybe related to our last, um, other sections, right? So now as we go ahead and talk about goals, policies and programs, I'm going to ask again, who would like to, let me just make sure I don't have any notes that I wanted to say first. I think we've covered all the basics. So is there anyone that would like to start with comments on this? I see you speaking, Adam, or about to speak.
And I can, I can go first. I'd rather not, but I'm happy to.
Well, we'll mix it up. I don't think you've gone first yet, so.
The chair, um, at, at the risk of imposing more structure, we don't want. Do we want to break this down by goals or do we want to go through them all at once?
Well, I feel like we could go through them all at once. Because I, I was, like I said earlier, I was sort of thinking of breaking them all down, but then I think that, um, I don't know, there's a little bit, well, there's a little bit of overlap with a couple of them, but I think that it might, uh, I, I think once we get on a roll, people will want to continue on. What, does anybody feel like we should break them down?
It might facilitate more discussion, but it also will most likely push this much, into a much longer meeting. It's kind of a.
I don't know, uh, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know either.
That was my thought as well, is that if, if we just do them all at once, I think we're just all going to be reading from our notes. Which, you know, could, could be helpful, but, um, sometimes I feel like the value comes out of us discussing things with each other.
Uh, well, okay, then I just, yeah, why don't we go ahead and break them out if you'd like? Again, like I said, I think if we have really highly detailed things that we should think about, um, I don't know, we can consider putting them in writing if it's a matter of words, I think things. Um, okay, so if we're looking at goal one, I'm trying to pull it up on my other screen here.
Through the chair, could the staff actually pull them up? I think it's like the last couple pages of the draft housing element might be helpful to look at them.
What's that?
Great, we have them.
Okay, so let's start with goal H1. Please, can you still go first, Adam?
Sure, sure. I think I want to note, I've been reading through rejection letters for other municipalities. And so most of my thoughts on this, or many of my thoughts come from that sort of information. For instance, I know Los Angeles, I read that rejection letter and while Los Angeles was praised for their overall really good housing element, um, it was rejected primarily due to some goals and policies regarding the AFFH programs. Um, and I think specific things were that the element needs to have actions that have geographic focus and firm commitments and significant targets. So that's, you know, metrics, those sorts of things. And so that's going to be, and that's, that's also repeated with other cities' rejection letters. You know, they need to have early deliverables. They need to demonstrate beneficial impact. And specific actions, commitments. They need to specifically respond to the analyses. They need to be significant and meaningful enough to overcome the identified patterns and trends. These, the programs need to have, um, metrics, milestones that lead to meaningful outcomes. So it's those kinds of things that, that I've looked at all of these goals, policies and programs through that lens. That, you know, quantifiable, getting, getting to a place where we're successful, uh, and they're sufficient to overcome patterns, things like that. They're sufficient to meet your, reach our goals. And, you know, everything that I'm looking at because it's close to home is through that lens, through the firmly, firmly furthering fair housing. And I know it's great that this, this city has said that, you know, all these policies in a sense intersect with that. So, um, I'm happy to, to start out with, with the non-affirmative furthering fair housing ones and go to like goal, just the production goals first. I'd like to, just so we're kind of there, if we can go to that sheet. Is it possible to go back? Yeah, go back to the goals. There we go. Thank you.
Through the chair, oh, sorry, Commissioner Newton, through the chair, is there a specific policy that you want to focus on or you want to go just um, in terms of, in the interest of time, like is there, is there specific policies within goal one that you want to focus on?
Yes, yes. Um, I want to focus on, um, 1.2, 1.3, while we're on this page, so to start. And I just want to note that 1.2 is a well-defined, ongoing program. So that seems like a pretty good one to, to, to keep. And the 1.3, unfortunately has non-committal language, like explore in it and, or, you know, anything like explore or assess. And so what we need to do is we need to transform that policy into something that has specific timeframes for action and quantifiable description with objectives for outcomes. And so, you know, alternative compliance options, what are those actual alternative compliance options? I just don't think that the target, the program measure is going to be up to par yet. Um, so that's all I have for this page. Let's go to, the next one I wanted to mention is the 1.5, so encourage family housing. Um, that's similar. I mean, obviously that's a great, that's a great thing to do, um, because there is a need for that. However, investigate feasibility, that's, that's something that we, that's something that we should have been doing, uh, months ago. And we should have something solid and provide, you know, clear, objective steps that we're going to do for encouraging family housing. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, I can look at it on my other screen. I just wanted to see what each column said. The target is one, and then the next one over says, now program measures and targets. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Using my other.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's hard, it's hard to track unless you have what the, the columns are memorized. One, so 1.9, create minimum densities for mixed-use residential projects. Yes, that's a, that's a good thing to do, but again, we need to have quantifiable description uh, of this action. So we can know what we're actually, so HCD can know what we're actually going to do for this. And that's something that we need to make decisions on quick. Similarly, uh, 1.13, which is encourage development of missing middle housing. So we need to have a quantifiable develop program of actions for that. So evaluating sites that have potential for missing middle development that in research evaluate, like, that's all stuff that I think is going to be completely rejected by HCD, not for the fact that it shouldn't be done, but for the fact that it's, it's too open-ended. Like, we need to have, we need to have something that, that HCD can be saying, yes, you're doing it right. Or no, you're not doing enough. And right now, it's just, it's, this, these, these are the decisions that we should be making at this point of how we're actually achieving this program. And then the next one would be 14. So again, same, similar comment for 14. You know, evaluate and update special needs group housing. So research code requirement, again, we should have been doing this months ago. Unfortunately, we're where we are. Let's figure out what we need by the time this is finished this year, um, for that. And then that's, that's all the comments I have for production.
Okay, um, we should, we're taking it point by point then. So, okay, John or Sima, would you like to go next?
Through the chair, I can go next.
Go right ahead.
Sure. So I had many of the same comments as Commissioner Newton, so I will not go through all of the same ones, but wanted to note in general that I saw the same thing about, um, one, many of these policies and programs as a group, uh, seem to be, uh, seem to be about getting our zoning in compliance with state laws, which is something we have to do anyway. So I'm not sure if we should be getting credit for them in some senses. Um, I also noted that many of these policies don't list outcomes and that they use words like research, assess, study and explore. In fact, 12 of the 36 policies use that language. And then also noted that our, uh, the HCD's building blocks website states that programs must include specific action steps. Locality will take to implement its policies and achieve its goals and objectives. Programs must also include a specific timeframe for implementation, identify the agencies or officials responsible. I did see we did that. And then describe the jurisdiction-specific role of implementation and whenever possible, identify specific measurable outcomes. And so, um, in my day job, I have to do a fair amount of drafting, uh, what are called objectives and key results. And so we often use this, uh, SMART framework, which stands for specific measurable, achievable, results-oriented and time-bound. Excuse me.
That's exactly what we.
Smart, it's easy to remember. Uh, and so I took a stab at it just as an example, because I know it's hard to understand without, without an example to look at. So if you go to H1 dot 13, excuse me. So if we wanted to take a stab at 1 dot 13, using that kind of SMART framework, we might say something like increase permit applications for two to six unit residential developments 25% by 2025, 100% by 2027 and 350% by 2031 via adoption of an SB 10 ordinance and elimination of constraints to multifamily development as determined by an evaluation of existing zoning codes against multifamily specifications found at missingmiddle.org. So I'll send that in text so that you can see it in writing, but I think the key thing there is having measurable milestones throughout the entire period and noting specific things that are going to be done so that we can benchmark against whether or not they actually have been completed. And I'm guessing that some of the hesitation here is that a lot of these potential specific measurable action-oriented goals would require approval by city council and potentially planning commission. And it's hard to predict whether or not that will happen. But because that these goals are supposed to be um, big, bold, actionable goals, I would say that we should set those, we should set those, um, big targets. We should, we should, uh, we should, we should set moonshots, right? Even thinking that we might not be able to achieve them, having a big goal that we're shooting towards will help ensure that we make progress towards that goal.
I would also, can I just interject, like, this isn't really like an option not to. Like, this is required from HCD based on us not wanting to get rejected. And we should do it well. And I know it's hard to be like, well, we shouldn't, can't plan to the nitty-gritty tiniest detail. So I think what Commissioner Patel is saying, that sort of, that sort of framework seems like a good way to start where we're not actually saying exactly what we're doing, where we're doing it. But we have very quantifiable targets that will hold us accountable. I think the big thing is HCD wants us to hold ourselves accountable. Um, which we should, like, because lack of accountability is a big problem and big reason for our issues right now.
I have one more that I want to call out, which is, um, H1 dot 17, which says, update our zoning to allow farmworker housing within the agriculture district consistent with state requirements. So, um, H, page H dash B dash 33, noted that only two areas are identified within the agricultural zoning district, which allows for agricultural use, and these two sites include the San Mateo County Event Center and a parcel within the College of San Mateo. It seems pretty unlikely to me that we would build farmworker housing at the event center and at the College of San Mateo. And so I know that we have to do this because we're required to bring our zoning inconsistent, to be consistent with state requirements. But again, I don't feel like this warrants being called out as a policy and a program that we're getting credit for, because at the end of the day, I think it's unlikely that it will actually be utilized to build farmworker housing. Specific comments.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ebner, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I don't have any comments on the production. Commissioner Nugent and Patel covered everything expertly, and I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to say that, but I do have a couple of comments. But but actually, some of them are exactly the same. So kind of going backwards a little bit, but 1.17 about regarding farmworker housing. I also felt like, you know, should we be including that if we don't really really have an opportunity for that? I mean, I, I don't, I guess it's not really like we're getting credit for, you know, housing units or something that we're not you know, that we're not able to build, but it seems like we're getting credit for a policy that we're not able to do. So that was my comment about that. I also, the other thing that I thought was funny was on the missing middle thing, I think, I forget which one of you guys said it, but, you know, I also was wondering if, I mean, obviously, HCD knows everything that we're talking about and understands all this terminology and, you know, for the general public's benefit, sometimes I feel like we should almost have, I mean, there is a reminder, Manera talked about this at the beginning, that, you know, we're partly, partly what we're doing is required addressing the requirements of the state, and it's not, we're not alone. Every, you know, jurisdiction of the state needs to do this. And in fact, actually, across the country, this is, it's not just California. But the missing middle, I guess, is where I was going to go with that was, I always feel like an example would be helpful, like, what specifically does that look like? And I don't know, maybe that's I'm not sure if that's feasible or not, but at least for the general public, I feel like that could have been maybe perhaps an example. Let's see. The only other thing I guess I was going to touch on was something towards the beginning, I think, on the first page. There was, is there a point about, yeah, the ADUs incentivizing ADUs? So, you know, I probably pushed back on size and height. I mean, I know I'm the one that's pushed back on size and height and various things related to ADUs in the past, but you know, they're here to stay. People want to build them. And so I do think that is important. And I don't know, I was, I can't recall exactly what I thought about that. I guess I was curious about the pre-approved ADU plans. I I don't know where to find those and see what those look like. I don't know if I like that or not, but that's probably important to include, I guess, but I should have asked that during questions earlier. So I guess that was my only comment there. I just, I think incentivizing ADUs is is an important thing.
Through the chair?
Yes.
ADUs have, I think, they definitely have a place or part in helping with our, our housing shortages and challenges. Yet, you know, I, I know at one point, there was discussion about low-cost loans or, or loans that wouldn't be paid back if the projects were deeded for low-cost housing for up to 10 or 15 years. Is that in another?
It is. I forget where it is in.
It gets in the AFFH portion, or maybe two, two different spots, but I do recall having notes on that.
Yeah, okay, then I'll wait for it till it comes up in the other one. Thanks.
Okay, so with that, I think we can move, I, I, those are my general comments. I think we can move on to preservation. Okay, great. And how many policies are there here? I forget. This was like 12 or something?
Through the chair, this is six policies.
Okay.
Do you want to just go in the same order?
Yeah, sure.
For the sake of time, so.
Going through that.
Yeah. So the first policy I wanted to talk about briefly was, was policy 2.1, which is fund housing rehabilitation efforts. I think that this is a great program. The, the issue, and it's also discussed in the AFFH portion, the issue I see with it is that it is relative, it's pretty minor scope. And so I think it's important that we provide metrics to evaluate the effectiveness of a program like this based on citywide habitability and health trends. Because that way we know, like, are we, is this worthwhile? Are we moving the needle at all in habitability? And, you know, that, you know, we might need to decide on another program of this nature that is better if it doesn't seem to be doing enough, like 10 minor home repairs for eight years is, is chump change compared to the need. So that's just my, my point on that is we should have some sort of evaluatable metrics. And then the next one is on the next page they have. And it's policy H 2.3. Encourage energy and water efficiency in existing units. I, I think it would be important to provide metrics to evaluate the effectiveness of a program similar to the last comment, based on citywide habitability and health trends. So th- this one, it, it, you know, it's, it's a good thing to do. But it also seems like a pretty minor drop in the bucket compared to the need. And what we need are, what we need generally are policies that can meet our needs. So not to say it's a bad program at all, I'm just would like to understand how it, how it is in the greater landscape. And then the next one is policy 2.4, explore capital improvements in lower resource neighborhoods. Yes. The only thing that I want to note is we should have some sort of metric for how we decide on that stated in here, because my neighborhood is very there's a lot of low trust among the community that has been purposefully segregated and mistreated throughout decades of American policy in, in San Mateo. And so we need to have high-trust building exercises, and one of those would be to clearly state, you know, what percentage of CB, CDBG money will go to, say, North Central or Shoreview or wherever, so that it is not possible for it to be channeled to less needy neighborhoods. So I, and just, it's a difficult thing. It's a difficult area, but we need to build trust, and part of that is having accountability through metrics in that. And then another policy 2.5, so promote housing resilience. I just wanted to note that this is an existing policy. It's ongoing, and it's extremely important, especially for Shoreview, North Shoreview and portions of North Central. So bravo, let's finish that. And then policy 2.6. I think we need to make this a permanent local ordinance. So this is evaluate SB 330. And I think SB 330 may expire at some, some point in the future. I think we should always have ordinance to require replacement units, like that just just be in our policies. And it can be modeled after 330. And I think that was it for the two series.
Okay, Sima.
I actually only had a few notes. One is that 2.1 and 2.3 both mentioned that they're connected to 5.3.2. And I saw this a few times, that something would be mentioned, it was connected to another policy, but in actuality, it just seems to be a duplicate policy. They, they appear to be the same policy, just repeated. It's like we took all of the policies that could also fall into affirmative, furthering fair housing and, and duplicated them. And it feels a little bit like we're double counting our policies. And so I'm not sure that we should do that or organize them in that way, because it, it can give the appearance that we have more policies than we actually have. So that's just something to consider. And then I also had a similar comment about SB 330. And potentially talking about maximizing flexibility for tenants, so that in addition to, I believe SB 330 requires us or requires that displaced tenants are given right of first return at the previous rent. But maybe also offer an option for buyout for developers if, if they want to do that as well. So that's something we can maybe add to that goal. I think those were my only notes on section two.
John, do you have any comments?
You know, I, I, I like the idea that we want to continue what we feel has been working in the past and build on it. I think key to this component is what Adam said and the, the trust in the areas that we are trying to, to help. You know, it can be real hard to be in an area that is distressed, and then in less than five minutes be, be a vehicle. You can be in an area where you've got $10 million homes with the most incredible streets, parks, schools, and amenities that you could imagine. And just that vision doesn't give you a feeling that your city is looking out for you. As it pertains to, you know, can we, can we go down a little bit lower? You know, to encourage energy and water efficiency, I think is already in our cap. There may be some metrics that would say how many units or what's going on. I don't know how robust it is, and I don't know the effort that the city is actually putting into it. You, when you're talking about improvements in lower resource neighborhoods, explore capital. I don't know what explore means. He, I think if you're going to be serious about these type of capital improvements and protections and, and resources, you've got to look, you've got to be very imaginative. But I think we also need to realize that this is a huge way. If our resources are used properly, if we identify them, it's a huge way to keep people in their neighborhoods. So you can cut down on displacement. You can, you, 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 you can solve a lot of your issues by investing in the built environment. And however we can raise those funds and the awareness of the need for it, the better off we are. But again, I think a lot of it comes down to, can you get neighborhoods, can you, can you put, implement policies that show concrete improvements in neighborhoods that will excite and involve the community? Having policies are great as long as you have the resources, ability, and desire to implement them in a meaningful manner. Thank you.
Okay. Um, my comments are, let's see, the first item 2.1. Yeah, I mean, I do, I have been talking about like, you know, this idea of sort of keeping people's, keep people in their home. But the numbers seemed very, very unambitious. And I think Adam pointed out, I don't know, I think there was a comparison, maybe there wasn't, but yeah, in terms of the numbers of actual houses out there, you know, dwellings, it seemed really low. So it seemed like we could be a little more ambitious than that. I also, however, I guess, you know, hand in hand with that is that there has to be you know, a real avenue for informing people about this opportunity, this available policy and opportunity to benefit from that. So that probably takes, I, that, I don't know, that needs to be in here, but it needs, needs to be allowed for or accounted for. Okay, 2 point, I guess 2.3, I made a little note to myself here just now, but I didn't think about this before, but 2.3 is about the water and energy savings and, you know, I think it's the next one down, right? 2.3. If you scroll, yeah, so weatherization and that kind of thing. And I mean, that does seem a little bit like, I don't know if we're duplicating efforts with, you know, we're in a drought, we're going to get maybe it's not the same thing. I, I made a couple of notes here while you guys were talking, so never mind about that one. Okay, then 2.4 and 2.6. Kind of similar. Well, no, 2.4, I guess my question was, these funds are, I mean, we have this in the housing element as, you know, explore capital improvement in particular neighborhoods, but isn't there a plan in place, if those funds are available, is there already a plan in place? And for how they, like, how they get used, how they're going to be rolled out? So I guess I didn't really know why, I mean, why that would be part of the housing element, when it seems like those those programs in and of themselves, like, for instance, the bike master plan or the pedestrian master plan, you know, or other capital improvement plans, I would think that would already be part of, you know, in their plans to, you know, how to roll them out. So I guess the fact that we are saying these areas get targeted first is a policy, so maybe that's acceptable, but it seemed kind of, I, it raised questions for me, I guess. Those 2.4, 2.6, 2.6, I felt like it was really vague and I didn't quite understand it. So require replacement units for low-income households. So if a house, I mean, we see this from time to time on some of these projects that we look at. You know, there's a building. I guess we don't see it with residential that much. So if, what I, what's not clear to me is require replacement. So I think it needs to be a little more clear about is there a, like, if it's a single-family home, is being replaced by something multifamily? Is that replacement unit within the new project? Or is it a replacement single-family home someplace else? Or I, I think that needs to be clarified, at least for maybe other people understand it, but I don't. So that would be helpful. That's my comments. So let's go on to protection. And maybe there was more information about that that I missed, which I'll go back and look for. Okay, so protection of current residents to prevent displacement. And I'm just curious, how many are there on this one? I can't quite remember.
It's a seven policies.
Okay. Okay, so Adam, I think you're first.
Sure, sure. I didn't have any comments on the first two. I think they're, they're fine. I would yeah, I just wanted to jump to the 3.3, so which is evaluate housing revenue sources. So again, similar comment about, you know, metro similar comment about, you know, metrics and and stuff researching is is probably not the action that we're actually looking for or the state is looking for. So what I want to recommend is changing that from evaluate to pursue additional local funding sources and then providing the city council with three options that they could choose from, including a vacancy tax, increased commercial linkage fees, which may have been mentioned elsewhere, and then the real estate transfer tax. I think that those should be chosen and designated in the next month. I mean, at least before it goes to HCD. And you know, it just that's just the nature of, I think, of this this process. The the next page is what I've got a couple of comments on that. So explore the below market rate set aside. That's similar. Let's do it. But we, the conduct of best practices research should be doing it should be something that's already been done, or we'd be doing it right now. And we can make decisions on it before we submit it. So that the just timing of that needs to be set. We should have a program. And then same thing for 3.6, examine a rental registry option. It should just be changed to adopt a rental registry option based on best practices or something like that. And then give a timeline for that. You know, it's either because yeah, same, I don't want to repeat myself. And then policy 3.7, you know, explore code amendments. That again, I'm not, I don't have it. I had a lot of experience or insights into this. So I just want to note that that we need to replace the noncommittal language from explore and assess to to, you know, actual program. Those are my, those are my comments on on those. The only other one that I wanted to mention is the expand tenant protections. I did have some comments that I had written down for the AFFH, because it's also listed in that portion, but I'll just say it really quick here. Let me find it in my notes. I think that this is vital and it could be strengthened. I think that relocation payments for demolition should be this should also be uncapped and negotiable. But that may not, that may not pass. And then I've got some other comments on that as far as you know, relocation payments should also be included for substantial remodels and mover owner movement. So demolition substantial remodels and mover owner movement, because that could be a way to get around that, that some tricky landlords might use to do the same thing. So just we need to close that loophole. All right, that's what I had for comments on 3.4. Sorry, I went out of order.
Okay, Seema.
Um, I just wanted to call out that I thought 3.2 did a pretty good job of being specific and measurable. So you know, rewarding things to be more like that would be great. And then 3.4 again, seems to be a duplicate of 5.4.1. And so I just think that we should not have duplicate policies in this section. I also had the same note about the rental registry that's 3.6, but was a little bit more ambitious in my rewording. I suggested adopting a rental registry by 2025 as a potential goal or target. So we we should definitely time bound that. That's it. Thank you.
Great, John.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Margaret. I think we need to look at age 3.4 and expand tenant protection under 1482. I I know that the city is looking at supporting 1482 and, you know, really bring it into into line with the the spirit of the law. There are some loopholes that have been left, which have left the law not as robust as it could be. You know, provision for a first year of Tennessee required documentation prior to remodel of demos or for for demolition and expand relocation assistance for all no fault evictions. Provide first right of return for renovation and demolition. And and again, I know that that there are things that the city is doing. I like that there is a timeline on it. Yet, I think the sooner the better. I'd rather see that timeline by the end of 2022. And I don't see why it couldn't happen. So hopefully, we can, we can, we can, we can move that timeframe up. And the rental registry is just a key component of understanding of what is going on in your city. The 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 report that I had talked about earlier that the city had put together in, I think, 2017 or 18 for their housing housing goals, it stated that they did not have enough information to to place or to implement new policy. Well, we still don't have the information and we don't have the information because we don't have a rental registry. And that is something else that I think should be in place by the end of 2022. It's it's going to give you a wealth of information that will help to protect your tenants, which will feed into the rest of these policies. And without the information, we're never going to know how big the problem is. And we're not going to be able to protect the people who are most vulnerable to eviction and landlord abuse. I also think that we need to have relocation act for Ellis Act evictions. It's coming pretty becoming pretty common. And you know, if we are going to be the bold leader in tenant protections, then we need to grasp what we can and implement them as soon as possible. And that was it on the protection side.
Um, thank you. I don't actually have notes for protection for some reason. I think that, although as I'm reading it now, I think that a couple of like, I I agree with what Seema said that like, H 3.2 has a lot of good specific information. And I think the one that strikes me as I think it was one of the lower ones about that that the one that struck me that as being like a little like, rather like really vague or just not specific enough for me to know what what it means is, I think it's 3.5. Yeah, I I just sort of focused in on that as we were talking now. So, you know, I I agree with these comments about, you know, explore or examine the feasibility of establishing priorities in city assisted projects by unit size. So that there's a lot of vagaries in or a lot of noncommittal kind of language in in that 3.5 as an example. And I think when I look at kind of households with special needs and extremely low income tenants, there's just a lot of, you know, not not a lot of commitment to that. I don't, I don't really know what all of that means specifically. So so I I mean, that's probably my only comment. The kind of wording thing that we've been talking about. Okay, I think we can go on to number four. So goal H4 is promotion. So the fourth P, promotion of community engagement and public outreach. Adam?
I'm muted.
We've only been doing it for how many years now?
Yeah, yeah.
We still forget our mute buttons.
Yeah, I think I didn't have a whole lot to to note about this. Outside of, you know, it's important that, you know, we don't accidentally create obstacles for housing in community outreach. Like, it's important that people understand what our needs are. And also, it's important that we get cross section of our demographic in the in the public outreach realm. And so having perhaps a goal where we add that that, you know, focuses more on, you know, scientific polling or non, you know, ways to get around the perennial problem of of misrepresenting the public as far as who's who's actively participating versus who's actually living in the city. So I'm I'm not sure what that that goal is specifically, but I think that's important to include that in ours as a affirmatively furthering fair housing sort of thing. So that's the only thing I wanted to mention about public outreach.
Okay, Seema.
Yeah, I was gonna note that, you know, just again, some the way that these are written, they don't feel particularly specific, measurable, results oriented or time bound. And so how can we shift the language to be more about results, you know, like increasing Spanish language participation by 100% would be a way of of making 4.4 results oriented. And then the other question had is one 4.1, 4.3, and 4.4 seem like things we're already doing. And so I think leaning into what is it that we're shifting or changing or doing differently could help help communicate how how this is different than what's currently happening. And that's it for this section. Thank you.
John?
You know, I I I know the importance of community engagement and outreach. And I understand the hurdles to make it effective and constructive. And I, far as I can tell, the city of San Mateo tries the they're very diligently to engage, especially the people that are underrepresented. And I also know that we fail very regularly. And it really concerns me that we are possibly going about it the same way each time and getting the same results, which are not positive. I mean, we've tried you know, fairs and at at the the music festivals and downtown gatherings and we don't get a buy in. And I know it personally, working with with other nonprofits trying to get input and engagement with the people that we are trying to help the most. And we don't do very well at it. So I I I struggle when when I see that we promote how much outreach we've done. Yet I don't see the results of that outreach helping us form our policies. And it's a disappointment that we aren't better at it. And I think we've got to figure out how to get better at it. It's just there's there's so many people that we're missing. And to continue to engage and try and engage with them, it's great. But we have not been successful. And I'm hoping that changes. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Um, yeah, I wanted to just kind of comment on what you just said, because you know, like you, I've been involved in a lot of different things over the years, even, you know, I mean, other you know, some nonprofit things, but also, you know, like PTA when my kids were little or, you know, my local chapter of architects and, you know, in terms of being on boards and and, you know, it is kind of disheartening sometimes because you really want to reach as many people as possible. And, you know, you're these these various, you know, you we want consensus, we want involvement, we want to benefit as many people as possible. But but I guess, you know, I guess I, you know, maybe I'm I don't want to be Pollyanna or whatever, but you know, it's just, it's the best, you know, the best we can do is just sort of I I I mean, I'm not saying this, we're all doing the best we can do, but this, you know, we just need to keep trying to, you know, and the city continues to keep trying to do outreach. And you know, I think over the years, you know, this is, you know, kind of interesting kind of word of mouth and you know, kind of game of telephone that takes place with different issues that I've seen in different organizations that, you know, people, people sort of slowly bring people into different areas. So I I guess I have hope that, you know, the the more kind of outreach that we do or that the city continues to to, you know, to keep that as a priority to the, you know, the whole of the city of San Mateo that, you know, that that it it pays off in small ways here and there. But so, I mean, I know, I hear you, it's frustrating. And I am sure the city, the, you know, all the folks at the city feel the same way. They, you know, they 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 do they do a lot of hard work on behalf of the residents of the city of San Mateo. So we we want it to to pay off and to to benefit everyone that needs it. So so I guess I felt like this goal was really important, as you said in your comments. And, you know, keep it as robust as we can. I guess kind of what we've been saying, you know, keep it specific if 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 possible. Kind of keep doing that. So I had a couple of couple of my notes here. Let me see what 4.1, I just said, yes, this is really important, you know, every possible way that we can communicate with people, be it, you know, websites or flyers or, you know, this is the way it happens, slowly but surely. Um, let's see, what else did I have to say? Oh, actually, I liked item 4.2, and it seemed like kind of a no brainer, I guess, like, this is, yeah, we should be kind of working, you know, not just within the, you know, you know, the constraints of our city limits, but crossing over to the county and working together with with the broader the broader jurisdictions. So I thought that one was really important. And I guess that's all my comments. This was kind of all the notes I had. So, yeah, thank you. Okay. Goal five, affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Yeah, this is where I have the most comments and input. And I think it's partially because it's both for two reasons. It's it hits really close to home in terms of my neighborhood and the needs of my neighborhood. And then also it's where the cities are often getting the most scrutiny and the feedback that I've seen from HCD. And so to just start off, you know, actions in this realm need to be significant, meaningful, and sufficient to overcome patterns of segregation. And so that's that's really high bars, and it's really important work that we're going to be doing in this area. I think that, you know, again, metrics and milestones are going to be important. But we also need to have a clear timeline with with specific dates and milestones that are paired with quantifiable outcomes in this realm. And again, it needs to have meaningful impact in the planning period. So when I think about this, I think, you know, what are the what are we looking at getting to in this realm? Like, what is the end state? And the things that HCD has provided for this is that we need to address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunity in our actions. So then these are the meaningful actions. and in access to opportunity in our actions. So then, these are the meaningful actions. The meaningful actions need to replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns and transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. And then also foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing laws. So those are, those are the things that we need to be doing. And I think these things need to have well-defined anti-displacement program requirements. And we need to have policies that have key quantitative metrics that are focused on integration segregation data. So we have in our housing elements, some fair amount of integration and segregation data. I think we need to, in order to make, to make any of these effective, we need to tie our policies to this data and have well-defined anti-displacement programs. So those two things are what I'm looking for. So there are significant disparities in housing needs. And I think when we create and look at our, evaluate these goals, we need to look at them from kind of the four areas that we've identified in our, um, previous sections of the housing element. So cost burden and severe cost burden, overcrowding, substandard housing and displacement risk. Displacement risk can be both investment-driven and disinvestment-driven. So I'm going to talk about each of those first before I get into the specifics. So cost burden and severe cost burden, part of that is really closely related to, to being able to actually meet our allocation at a minimum. So we actually need to build more housing. And that's, that's a big part of it. And so failure to adequately plan for that is what's going to drive additional cost burden. Um, so that's not a specific policy, but it's all related to that. And cost burden is kind of associated with all, all of these, um, problems, the, including overcrowding. So overcrowding is also highly related to us meeting our, our requirements and exceeding them. Um, but it's also highly location-specific and needs to be addressed in a combined effort to prevent displacement. So that's where I'm going to be looking at, um, at some of these programs further. And overcrowding as a measurable factor. So we need to include overcrowding in our policy actions and actions as a measurable factor and create a goal within a set timeline, say, one to two decades for achieving, you know, both elimination of disparities in overcrowding between neighborhoods and, uh, eliminating overcrowding in general within San Mateo. So there's two things. Disparities and overcrowding and overcrowding in, in general. And so those are metrics that we should be imposing onto these programs. And then substandard housing, that's also geographically linked to overcrowding. And that needs to have programs, policies and actions that are tailored to a measurable outcome with a time target, say, one to two decades. And it's best done as a part of a larger program, which I'll get to, which is included in this. So, finally, we're going to talk about displacement risk, and I'll get to that later. I'll come back to that. Before we get into that, I did want to talk about potentially having an affordable housing overlay that's not included in this, but having an over, affordable housing overlay could go a long way towards making affordable housing advantageous against other types of projects and geographically locate it in places where there's high opportunity. So I'm going to go specifically into the policies now. So policy five point one point one is a very, it's a positive program, but it also lacks firm commitments. And it's lacking significant targets for outcomes. So, you know, this is perform a feasibility analysis. It's not, don't want to sound like a broken record, but that needs to be hammered out in this, in this document. Five point one point, or sorry, five point one point two, the next one is, i- is participate in a regional down payment program. Uh, I just want to note that this program has a potential for life-changing outcomes. So it could be extremely huge for some people. However, it's very limited in scope and it's not going to significantly address large-scale systemic issues. So it's kind of like a lottery. And I don't want to base our whole program on a lottery. However, it would have potential life-changing outcomes for some people. So not a bad program, but also definitely not sufficient to, to achieve actual goals that we need to make. Uh, and then, uh, what is this? So five point one point three, which is support the design of regional forgivable, forgivable loan program, program for fifteen-year extremely low income ADU construction. So I think that's a very good program. It has the potential to contribute to overcoming patterns of segregation as well and providing opportunities and high opportunity in neighborhoods in ADUs. But again, it's also very limited in scope and it's not going to significantly address the large-scale systemic issues. And we need to have these deliverables early in the planning period to ensure actual housing outcomes. So I think that summer twenty twenty-five is a little late. To start, we should be starting in twenty twenty-four. And then also, like many things, lack specific actions and metric-ready commitments. So, um, again, it's a very intriguing program. Additionally, I want to mention that this program, this five point one point three should include, in addition, um, policy revision recommendation of expanding it to SB nine projects and incorporating an option for longer deed restrictions, so fifty-five years for a low-income unit within an SB nine program. So giving options where it's a longer deed restriction, but it's not as, not as, it's not extremely low income. It's just low income. I think that that would be a good way to, to provide options for, for homeowners. And let's see. I'm, I go to the next sheet, which is five point two point one. I'm sorry, five point two point one. Thank you. It's action area two, so encouraging, uh, new housing. So, the first one I wanted to talk about is five point two point one, which is affirmatively market VMR units to households with disproportionate housing needs. So that's a positive program with metrics. One thing I want to note is that people with special needs are going to have unique and special needs that should be matched up to the type of housing. And so it's, each potential recipient may be quite different from the next in the program that's needed for tailoring. So that, um, that particular issue in this needs to be addressed in this program. Because somebody with, with, um, mental health needs is, might be different than somebody with accessibility issue needs. So we need to define that, how we actually market that. Also, it's fairly limited in scope. It's not going to address the larger scale system, systemic issues. The second one, which is incentivized development of new accessible units. Again, this is a positive program with potential to, for life-changing outcomes. But it's also fairly limited in scope. And I think that the deliverables need to be occurring earlier in the planning period. So it says twenty twenty-six. Um, and then like, a lot of things, it's lacking specific actions and metric-ready commitments. So how are we going to modify developer ingredients? When is it appropriate? You know, this needs to be figured out and stated. The next one, it's the five point two point three on the bottom. The only comments I have that that is, it's a positive program, but it's limited money, so it's not going to have a huge impact. And it's currently lacking specific actions and quantifiable commitments. So the next one is five point three point one, which is action area three. So that's place-based, um, strategies to encourage community conservation. So this is, the first one is five point three point one. It's conduct an area plan for North Shoreview and North Central. So this is the program that probably has the most possibility for being substantial. But it's currently lacking firm commitments and significant targets for affirmatively furthering fair housing outcomes. So what I mean by that is, I think that, uh, five point three point one needs to have, um, specific, should be very specific on the, on the regulatory incentives, zoning standards and programs that it's going to offer. And the deliverables need to be occurring earlier, demonstrate that the program will have a beneficial, beneficial impact in the planning period. So twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight is very, is pretty close to the end. It's, it's right there in the middle. The stuff that's involved with this is not going to kick in towards the very end of the program. So, um, that, that timeline should shift. And then it also needs to provide measurable milestones and target dates to achieve specific goals. And what does that mean? So actions need to specifically respond to the analysis in, in area plan. So, um, they need to be prior, based on prioritized contributing factors. And they need to be significant and meaningful enough to overcome the patterns and trends. So how does that, how does that translate? So specific planning goals must also include displacement prevention that is numerically and measurable. And then elimination of disproportionate concentrations of poverty, low-income households and overcrowding. So this sort of program needs to have metrics or else it's going to completely fall apart and could be derailed. So what, what we would need is displacement prevention plus, um, metrics for eliminating disproportionate concentrations of poverty, low-income households and overcrowding. So those two things must come hand in hand, displacement prevention with those things. And then just to color that a little bit, any sort of planning that we're doing in the city, both with the general plan or any specific plans, has to be the exact opposite of what urban renewal was. Because urban renewal was about clearing and reducing urban density. It was about conflating overcrowding with urban density. And so urban renewal tried to disperse and displace people. It tried to clear slums, uh, and replace them with things like freeways, stadiums, convention centers and inadequately sized public housing. So that is something that must be clearly demarcated in metrics that were not in the process of displacing anyone in any sort of planning scenario. And then finally, oh, no, I have a bit more to say on this. Planning goals should be structured with metrics and target dates. And here are some examples. Eliminate overcrowding by twenty forty. Achieve parity with the city in economic and racial integration by a year, like twenty forty. Achieve health and housing habitability parity with the city by twenty forty or, or some other year. And then maintain, maintain an out-migration rate. So we need to be able to measure displacement at or below some earlier date rate. And then finally, eliminate disproportionate concentrations of low-income residents while increasing permanently affordable housing options. So that would be deed restricted affordable housing. Continuing that, the plan must feasibly accommodate community benefits agreements that balance redevelopment proposals with tangible local benefits to residents in the area. So that, that just, that comment right there is pulled straight from the affirmatively furthering fair housing documentation from HCD. It needs to feasibly accommodate community benefits agreements that balance redevelopment proposals with tangible local benefits to residents. That could be affordable housing, funding renter assistance programs for nearby residents or other investments that meet community identified needs such as infrastructure and community amenities, preferably through the SB one thousand program. And then a couple more comments on that. When talking about R one portions of neighborhoods, uh, such as North Shoreview and, and or Central, R one portions of these neighborhoods should be provided with complete parity of treatment with the rest of San Mateo's R one neighborhoods. And the reason for that is the lower home values and lower wealth of non-white owner-occupant homeowners means that we need to carefully manage and enhance the amenity-related value of ownership housing and pay, in places predominantly occupied by minorities. So what does that mean? We can't treat minority-dominated ownership housing differently in a way that destroys wealth in a way differently from, um, white-dominated neighborhoods. Um, and then we also need to balance that sort of task with displacement protections. And finally, the conclusion on that program, we need to provide specific timeframes for actions and quantifiable description of actions to objectively measure for successful outcomes. And then we need to have metrics to evaluate the plan, uh, and they must be in place to ultimately replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns, transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. So those are the two fundamental metrics. All right, that was a lot on three point one. So I'm going to go on to five point three point two, which is continue to fund minor home repairs. I've already mentioned that it's a limited program, but it's nice. The next one is five point three point three. It's important to preserve affordability in that. But monitor and develop a plan are not, are not adequate policies. We need to have a plan to preserve the Bridgepoint condominiums, or we don't. And right now, we don't have a plan. And so like, we should show HCD that we have a plan to preserve them, or we'll tell, tell HCD we don't. Like, it's kind of, and then policy five point four point one. I, yeah, sorry, that, so this is the tenant protections. So I think this is vital, four point one is vital, can be strengthened. I think that relocation payments for demolition could be uncapped or innegotiable. So in that vein, I think that there should be an opportunity to have, um, paired with that, the right of return policy, um, provide an alternative option for unrestricted negotiable tenant buyouts. And the reason I say that is there will be people that do not want to return. But we need to ensure that every policy that we make makes all residents materially better off following any sort of neighborhood change or improvement. Um, and so right of return should be an option for everyone that wants it. But some people may not want it. And so we can't leave those people, you know, empty. So provide an unrestricted negotiable tenant buyout in addition to that. Uh, you can choose one or the other. And then that is, hold on, let me get back to my notes. I jumped around. Sorry. The next thing, so the next thing I wanted to mention is that we should be extending, I think Commissioner Ebner had mentioned it, but extending fourteen eighty-two to tenure less than one year. So that seems to make sense to me. And then finally, in this just general area, it's not a specific, it's not a specific program that's proposed. But we should also add community. But we should also add community opportunity to purchase, tenant opportunity to purchase program. And, and pair that with, you know, partnerships with philanthropic organizations. So I would recommend adding that as a, as an additional action. All right, so that is it for FFH.
All right, thank you for your comments. So we'll go on to Commissioner Patel.
I do not have any comments beyond what Commissioner Nugent already stated.
Yeah, that was very thorough. Okay, Commissioner Ebner, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you, Adam. I struggle, I struggle with this component. On a few levels. But first of all. With how. Our city has chosen to put together. The sites inventory. And how it directly relates to AB six eighty-six. So what we were, were supposed to do. Was all of our outreach. On affirmative furthering fair housing, doing the assessment. Of fair housing and then put our sites inventory together. Matching, making sure that it met all of the requirements for AB six eighty-six. Instead of doing that, we put our sites inventory together without knowing. What the outcome of the outreach and the assessment were. And the reason why I'm saying I'm struggling with these goals is because. We haven't even followed. The guidelines for state law on how to get. To affirmatively furthering fair housing as it relates to our sites inventory. And that. I think was a poor decision. And I have never been told why it was that way, other than. The last housing manager at the city of San Mateo said during one meeting that the council. Directed them to do it that way, but I've never heard a city council member say that. So overall, overall, I think that is the first step where we chose not. To further affirmatively fair housing, because we didn't even follow the goal, the, the timelines. Or the, the, the steps properly. With that said. I think there are. I think the two major. Constraints to affirm really further fair housing. Are. Directly. Related to a fabricated. Land resource. Deficiency. And restricted zoning and measure wise hindrance of heights and densities. We have not given ourselves the ability to build affordable housing. Because our hands have been tied by our zoning. And by our refusal to use seventy-five percent of our land mass. Which is all our ones excluded from the market. Which puts extreme pressure on all of the rest of the city. In the, in the. In the way of cost escalation. I think Adam went through these programs expertly. And I don't have any specific. Items to address, but I look at them as. Holistically, unless we actually implement. Plans to address our measure Y hindrances. And our fabricated land use policies. We are going to continue to fail to meet any meaningful actions of affirmatively furthering fair housing. One of the statements in. The pack, a few times in the, in the overall packet, it says sites, the sites inventory. Should include. A variety of different types of locations, including residential that is underperforming. So we've got residential sites in the city of San Mateo. That are ten thousand square feet or larger and have four thousand square foot homes on them. I would say that is a underperforming location. And that use of that land. Inflates the prices of all of the rest of the available properties. Which in turn makes it virtually impossible to build affordable housing. What I would like to see. Is. As. Looking at explicit ways to address the measure Y. Hindrances and what policies could put, be put in place, be it. A. A new, a, 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 a new vote on the, on the, on the project, on the policy. Or other ways to work around it. I also think that we should be up zoning the whole city. No matter where it is. We can do it. Very thoughtfully. With objective architectural goals, which we're working on, standards which we are working on now. And. Expand the availability of land. To include housing of different types in R one zones. That is one of the most important areas of the city, if not the most important area of the city. That we need to desegregate. Without it, we don't meet our stated. General plan vision statements. We don't, we won't make it. We, we won't come anywhere close to making this an inclusive city. And that's the overriding component of that general plan vision, that we're an inclusive city with housing for all. I also would like to see. The city. Continue to. Look at the numerous. Tenant protections that are splattered throughout this. These goals. That's the least we can do to give us a footing to start to address. Not only the legacy of segregated housing. But also the importance of giving people stability, so they think that they have a future in this city. And they're not just disposable renters without anyone in helping them out. I would think that what, I feel that one of the important components. That could help with financing on a lot of these programs. Would be if the city was, could join with the county and other local jurisdictions and do a public bank. It takes so much pressure off of. You can use the funds for the betterment of the community. And at the same time have re, we have, have funds to not only work on housing issues. But also on infrastructure and you take the corporate component out, you can use the money for good. Instead of just for profit, which leads to displacement. So that is one of the components that I would love to see. Included. It can be beneficial, it takes a long time to put in place. Yet if you do have a public bank, you can use those funds for a lot of public good. And I think that was it. Thank you, Margaret.
Can I jump in to the chair? I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the public bank. And this is to anybody's staff or Commissioner Ebner. Do you know of any? Any good examples in California of that? I'm very intrigued by the program for that. And I want to know if there's any good examples of that.
Adam. Through the chair, thank you for asking that question, but the last time I really looked into it was a couple of years ago when I was. Trying to be appointed as a city council member. So I haven't researched it since. I do know that there have been some efforts in Southern California. Obviously, there are public banks elsewhere that have been in place for hundreds of, you know, a hundred years. I don't have any, any current information here in California.
Chair Williams, you're not coming through.
Thank you, I was on mute. On my phone, so, uh, yeah, I think that, uh, thank you. I think funding is, um, you know, really kind of an overarching question about, um, you know, throughout this and throughout a lot of programs and. It's an interesting concept I'd be interested in knowing more about, because, I mean, you know, what we heard last week was that one. Was, was it that one unit can cost seven hundred thousand dollars? And, you know. Again, as I said earlier, I mean, you know, our developers and our communities are, you know, do a wonderful job. They're providing a lot of jobs to people, but they're, you know, they're for profit businesses, which is why they're in business. And, um, so, I mean, you know, I, I think, I think it's a big question though, because, you know, the. Lots of these are. You know, the city has limited resources, as we also heard last week. So, so I think it's a question of, yeah, how the funding really, how it looks and where, where it's really coming from and. So, um, I did have a couple of specific comments. And I don't know, they're kind of random, I guess, five point one point two. I don't know, it kind of made me think, um, more closely about the two thousand eight. I don't know, what was that called, the subprime mortgage meltdown? Because I worry about whether or not there's, maybe times are different, but times have kind of, you know, it's really kind of been a seesaw. After two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there were some protections in place for the consumer in terms of. Mortgages and, um, you know, what kind of sort of trouble people could get into. That was, you know, there was. There were a lot of protections put in place, which have since been diluted quite a bit over the years. So, um, so I think that. Five point one point two. It is, it's, it is, it is somewhat specific and then it has numbers in it, which is helpful. I guess I would like to know if, I, I guess I would like to assure that there was. You know, consumer protections in place for, um, for people that are, um, for homeowners. So that's, I guess, what kind of, it, it's very, it is specific, it's small, but I think it's significant. So long as it doesn't have any risks to, um. You know, to homeowners, I mean, I mean, there were a lot of people that lost their homes that were, you know, kind of. You know, not the wealthy people in our, in this country that lost their homes. Maybe, maybe they did too, but, um, lots of people that were just trying to be homeowners. So that's, uh, five point one point two, five point one point three. And also another later one, I was wondering why. Can we go, let's see, five point one point three. It has a sunset of like fifteen years. And I'm always just curious, like, why is there sunset? Is that based on the numbers of, you know, the financing or the, the, the dollars that are available? Or, uh, why, why are there sunsets? And I guess that there have to be, but fifteen years seemed not that long out there. And then there was another one, five point three point three, that also had five point three point three, if you could skip to that one. Yeah, so this was the one about all the units that will be sunsetting. And. So that seems like a concern. What, what do we, what do we do about that? I'm not sure, that one wasn't very clear to me as to what's going to happen to those ones. And then also the earlier point about, you know, we have a sunset in fifteen years and. I, I, I'm sure there's a reason for it, but it, you know, it just seems like it's not very long. The only other comment I would have, so I guess a lot of these are questions, but I'm just raising them as things to look at closer. Five point two point two, could you go to that one? I can't remember what my comment was here. It's been a while since I looked at it, so five point two was. Thought it was about accessibility. Increased accessibility requirements beyond the federal requirement of five percent for subsidized developers. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't really remember what my quest, what my comment was here, so. Modified developer agreements when appropriate, or maybe that was a update inclusionary policy the site was connected to. So, um, I'm very interested in this one, because, um, I, I also deal with, um, I do a lot of. Healthcare work, not residential work, but I deal with accessibility on a daily basis, pretty much in my architectural work. And so this one caught my eye as being really important. And if we could be sure to. You know, include. Um, accessible housing, but it wasn't exactly, yeah, I, I think I was questioning, what does that mean? Modified developer agreements when appropriate, update inclusionary policy. So, um, I guess we can't require it, but it would be, um, nice to have a stronger statement than that. So that is all the comments I had on this area. I think we kind of, we kind of touched on this general subject last week, so I felt like they was kind of zeroing in on the specifics of it. And with, yeah.
So, um, the one on the ADUs and a, and a sunset in fifteen years. I'd actually. Wrote an article for the journal and I went to the county supervisors and floated that idea. And fifteen years just popped into my mind as an appropriate amount of time for. Binding a property owner to low cost housing. So, um, I was surprised to see it on this list, because I didn't know if it had ever made any traction. But that was the reason, but there was another component to that also. And what I felt was the rent from the units. Should be paid back to as part of the loan and it didn't go to the owners. Um, and, uh, so you always had that, that money going back into the pot, see what I mean? It wasn't, it wasn't a one time deal, but, um, it was.
Which is why you had a sunset, which is why you had a sunset on that, so that would be an incentive for the homeowner.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you, that helps. Okay, um, well then, so I think that closes that last point, the last item. I don't know what we need to do tonight now, because we basically discussed all the items, we're not taking a vote or making any motions. Just having had provided, uh, comments to you all. Is there anything else that we should cover before we? Is there anything else that we should cover before we wrap this up?
Thank you, Chair Williams. I think if the commission has provided all the input, we appreciate all the comments and we'll go back to the city council, summarize the comments for them and also address the next version of the draft.
Okay, great. So with that, then we did announcements last, well, I guess we could close this item. There's no further comments. And then we can move on to any last items like announcements or new business, although we did that last week, but
Right, they're not agendaged, Commissioner. So at this point, if you choose, you can agenda the meeting.
Great. Okay. Well, I think with that, we can just adjourn the meeting then and we'll be back next week.
Thank you for, thank you for all the hard work you're doing. And we know this is a lot, but we appreciate it so much.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.